All right, we're gonna continue on with our work session. And uh, now there's some people are still enjoying themselves out there, so we're gonna get back. Because we don't have anybody on the uh, on the video, right?
Everybody here, sir. Yes.
I don't, I don't, I don't even have you. Is your computer in this session? Oh, yeah.
I think yes, are they on?
It's on.
I can't hear.
They haven't talked to me.
Say something.
It has.
That's bad.
It's heavily closed. I heard we had some, it's a farm with a building.
No problem, we got you back.
Uh, just, just looking at the regular agenda, um, so that we go to the work. Do we have any issues with the regular meetings for September 8th, the work session, the regular session? We have the ad buy campaign. Basically, I think the one's gonna present that, but that will allow us to visit first aid to the other people under the disorder, habitat. I think the one's gonna make a discussion about that soon. Have you got that in the packet? Any issues related to that? Um, on the regular meeting agenda, we're going to table item four. We're gonna table item seven. About discussions. Table person. Then we got recognition for the board of commissioners on the other. So somebody really appreciate their response on that four, but the meeting actually started second. We've got confirmation towards the economic development director, uh, Bang, who established salary of eighty thousand. Any issues related to that?
Um, mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you ask if there were issues with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, yes, sir, I do have an issue with that.
Okay.
Um, based on Mr. Bang's resume and the job description, um, I didn't find any comparables there. And to start at, um, that salary, I think is, is quite high. To me, his resume reflected more of an entry level economic, uh, well, manager, not, not a economic direct, uh, development director. So I think that's high. And, uh, considering that we are cutting budgets and things like that for other departments, I'd like to look at that salary before we confirm that.
Okay. Continue. Approval for staff recommendations and changes to final work job description. Any issues with that? Or this is second reading of an ordinance, uh, scheduling the fee schedule for sanitation. First reading, uh, related to facility usage fees, uh, this is giving a little more flexibility to conference center space. And we enacted, we have shady persons problem absolute schedule, any issues with that?
Mayor, just, if I may, it's the conference center, it's the dark space, the exhibit hall, uh, the outdoor town center and the welcome that fall, it's the, all four of those rental type facilities, not just a lot.
Okay, and any issues with that at the moment? Uh, first reading of ordinance, uh, related to bus stops. Any issues with that?
So if we're going to, uh, table the, uh, if we're gonna table the termination, let's table the ordinance with regard to the bus stop so that we can have comprehensive conversation and understanding of what the goal is and how to approach, uh, a better solution for bus stops.
What that particular ordinance does is a first read, um, would require a second read to enact it. And basically that, um, removes some of the, um, exemptions from any of the operating system law.
And so again, with the conversation with regards to bus stops, I think it would be in the best interest for us to have a better conversation and understanding of what the goal is with regards to that ordinance, in addition to a better plan to achieve better bus stop.
I understand. Okay, and that's gonna be your agenda?
Well, and if I may, I apologize, but because the ad buy campaign is on the consent agenda and we did not have any conversation, uh, otherwise, I didn't expect the presentation about it.
Okay, but see, in fact, we obviously talked about ad lane.
Right.
So this is basically us giving you a set number?
Right, yes, sir.
Do we have any issues with that?
We did have a conversation, uh, with the city manager with regard to the concentration of the current, uh, rollout in the campaign. And we wanna make sure that there is a, an additional review and an understanding that we want to do some trade association magazines, um, some items that we discussed with the city manager, uh, because we are specifically targeting, uh, two cultural groups. But we do wanna make sure that there's an effort to go after, whether it's the wedding industry trade, trade magazines, whether it is, um, real estate or industrial business type trade magazines, so that we can also target those markets with regard to the malls that are being a need in place.
And I don't think anybody's got any issues with that. Finishing up, uh, work session. So obviously, we're not going to have a second session. Yeah, I think you're working out from front of the, um, I just said. So now we're just trying to pick up the, the session here. All right, so we have a presentation on basically the san, or not sanitation, but buses, uh, we're gonna, uh, into, uh, Ms. Martin Tracy.
No, we just need to make sure you're going to be heard. I know he stepped out, so because we don't have the microphones on the tables.
How about I do a test test? Can everyone hear me? Can you all hear me, mayor and council? But how about you guys back there when I'm looking this way?
Yep.
All right, I'll keep my voice up and I'll be out tomorrow because I probably won't be able to talk.
For those of you who didn't come, uh, our full presentation will be up by four, four thirty.
There you go.
Jasmine's gonna hook us up.
I'm no boon, so I'm gonna try my best here.
Where you go?
I've learned so much about technology since I came over here. Well, I'm gonna have to give a, a brief summary, uh, about Martha and how they, how their, um, bus stops are looking and how passengers are experiencing the use of public transportation in the city of Portland this time. Um, first thing I wanna mention is that the, uh, city code, can I get my clicker? Got one here. The city code has verbiage in it, it's the zoning code actually, that regulates public and private bus systems. And that includes the, um, the nature of the bus stops. Um, the takeaways from the code, they are required to have a twelve by fifty foot pullover lane. And that lessens the negative impact on traffic flow, as well as protecting the, um, passenger safety. And zoning also requires a shelter with seating and blocking. Again, that's protecting the passengers and provides a minimum comfort for the passengers while waiting. About ten years ago, some of you may recall, when C train was here. This code was put into place and the passengers began to benefit from that zoning code requirements. Uh, there were two shelters were constructed on it. Those of you that are active in community garden will listen to this one, this is at the LCI stop over by the parking deck on Jonesville Road. And, um, the city, next one, which is Walmart, you consider two different styles, so Walmart really went, uh, full throttle, putting nears up, this was by the grocery area. Um, but when Marty came in, they decided not to use this, this was being used by C train for northbound southbound trap of passengers. But Marty decided to take passengers up to the curb side of Jonesville Road. And so now, if you look in the circled, red circled areas, you'll see people sitting on tiptoe grocery carts. There's some O B grocery carts and you'll notice they're sitting in the shade. Um, the sun in the summertime, you know it's brutal. So they're, they're finding their own protection out there since, so if you don't have shelters at that particular location. Actually, there's only two threat, well, Marty uses two shelters, they establish one in Sideline and they're using the one at the LCI location now too. Um, this is the other side, which is adjacent to Walmart, it's the northbound stop. No seat, no sidewalk and it right on the curb. This is across from City Hall, may have seen it, it's the northbound lane, so it's adjacent to the R O Southern right way. Dirt and a sign and pole. And that's what most of the, the bus stops that they established are, it's a sign and on pole. Unfortunately, the city's invested a lot of years in a really good sidewalk system, so they're not always having to stand in the dirt, which, um, eventually happens, there's only grass. Some bus stops, all they did was put a sign up on some of our decorative green lighting, which, uh, some of those are actually private property. But that's, that's the extent we're going to, is that was bus stop. Here's a, a particular stop that is concerning to me about the choice. It's on Merchant's Way, the parking lot behind it is the social security office. Social security's primary clientele are people that may have some sort of disability or they're in late age group. That is smack on the street, there's no pullover lane, no distance between them, there's, it's down a hill, it's just, there's some questionable stops and, and choices that were made as to how to take care of the, the demographic that might be making use of the stuff. Um, across from Crystal and John Roberts, Jonesville Road, the, the landscaping is deteriorating from the foot traffic. And if you look under what, mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, the crate wall, um, you'll see the grass is starting to disappear in there too, so that's another place where someone is seeking shelter of their own. This one in front of Sherwin-Williams plant, that would technically be a pullover lane, that already existed when Marty just stuck a sign in for him. The dirty area that used to be, um, have vegetation on it. And it slopes, so it rains, people have to stand in the middle on a hill. So I think we could do better than that too. Okay, there are thirty-six, there could be thirty-eight stops in the city. All but, uh, thirty of them are south of I seventy-five. So there's very little service in the area where most of the residential people are. Now, I'm selling all back to Walmart. So they have, um, done at least one thing to provide for their, their passengers, they have a free mobile app that's called Mordot Go. They use it, their cell phones passengers have access to real time tracking of their bus. As you see, it's circled at the bottom, you click on bus and it will take you to where you can real time info on buses. Um, Route one ninety-three is what goes through Morrow. And on the right hand side, if you click on this little circles in the app, that'll tell you when the bus is, how it's running on time, when it's expected to arrive. So that cuts down the wait time, which makes it easier, especially with this really hot and rainy, and it makes it easier for folks to now get the public transportation system that Martha has. And that's actually in a nutshell.
Let's ask a couple questions. So ten years ago, fifteen years ago, you know, before C train was really created, the city did a tremendous amount of research comparing, you know, different municipal type assistance. And we compared, uh, Cal County Transit as, as basically the best operator in terms of what would be comparable to Walmart. And where does that slide presentation at? Do we have that from, from history, ma'am?
I have not seen that. I mean, I, I searched for it, certainly could be.
Cause the idea behind this, we, we looked at Shenanah, uh, for those of you who know that it's outside of, uh, Fulton County. And what, what you're projecting or what you just saw is what we wanted to avoid. And that was the idea of setting up a K in the first place. And to be able to have some assistance that basically says, if somebody wants to do something, we wanna work with private sector, we wanna work with public sector. We, we want to make sure, uh, that it's built to a quality, right? And then remember, as, as citizens, you're paying for it, you know, it's, it's not like we're taking somebody else's money. This is your money, right? I, I question whether a reasonable amount of people will want to stand, you know, in a mudroom. They, they probably don't, right? So then we would say that person might not have any choice. But if, if we build something of quality that you would write it, that I would write it, then they're gonna write it as well, right? So when we decide, you know, this is where you gotta kind of be a little careful about your wording, but, you know, I, I can't build, um, a number of things. Take, let's use that stop right there. You know, you legally can't walk across a railroad track, right? If you actually do a wrong, there might even be a foul charge related to that. And the chief of somebody back there can answer that question. Then, has anybody actually tried to walk that? There's a crosswalk there. And let's say you do have a disability, every one of our sidewalks is built, including the City Hall and little things, has ADA accessibility to it, this is required by federal law. So how exactly do we accomplish that? And then let's assume, let's assume somebody that's got a disability. I, I can't do that. Neither can they, to be honest, you know? And, and you go, okay, so let's, let's just call it an oversight for this one. Then what are we all gonna do collectively to fix it? It has to lead us to the discussion. And it basically says, that is absolutely unacceptable. It, it is your money. We do have the rules that we have to follow, just like everybody else, you'll see that when you come in and out of this building. So then we would say, is there comparables in other locations that the similar, you know, concept is? And then of course, we all know the answer is yes, you know? So if I go up to Dunwoody or I go up to some of these other locations, same brand is hanging on the side there. They're paying for that, just like you're paying for that. They managed to figure it out. And I know Cal counties is still separate, but they've figured that out pretty well as well. So as you're spending your money at Walmart or other locations, I, I think it is very reasonable for you to expect a similar quality by the exact same company in your side of town. In fact, taking off of that just a little bit. And most of this is related to quality, but let's, let's take one step further. Is, you also have to realize that it has to go somewhere. And the number one employer in this entire county is the, uh, back town. That particular route, you could eventually get there, but it doesn't go straight to the end. The other route that comes off the South Lake Hall doesn't go that straightforward. And you go, okay, but I can go from East Point, I can go back up. But that's true, I, I can actually get to Tennessee by going through Alabama, that is true. But I can also go straight up and then get back to the point. And if you ask yourself, let's say you got on at the, the Jonesboro, um, courthouse down there, it is one hour of ride time before they drop you off in the rail system, that means it's an hour and a half downtown. We realize traffic's tough, but, you know, we could drive all the way from here to John's Creek in that time. Again, problem accepted. When we voted on this, we were assured of a couple things, you know, a good system, okay? Some accountability, okay? A rail component. There was some discussion that that rail component now might be just a high capacity bus. And you go, I don't think that's what we had in mind. You know, there, there's not a lot of bus stops that are gonna create, you know, real value in terms of property value increases or things like that. Now you look at, say, the rail system and when you're talking about Lindbergh Station, uh, the Kader, uh, the new ones up at North Atlanta, you know, those are places where people will drive to it, get on it, and that's ours. So Mart, Forest Park, Jonesboro, Love Child, I've been waiting on this, this rail concept for a long time. Fifty percent of these, this one penny that is collected is supposed to be designed for some of that. Where is that? And has, are they, are they gonna follow through? So what I can say is, after a series of discussions this morning, with some high level, high ranking individuals on this county, we're gonna have a better discussion. And we are not alone. We're not the only ones asking this question. People are in, it's interesting when you have the discussion and it doesn't appear to go in the right direction, but from some of that discussion, you begin to realize some things that maybe you didn't know, right? We know some people who started on some boards. We know that for a fact. And you get to vote for them too. And that's good. So at this point, we'll, we'll table the first point. We want to continue the discussion, we want to continue the itemized issue of quality. We want to make a better system. And I'm very comfortable that we will get there. We didn't get where we are today overnight. I can't promise you we're going to make magic happen and we're gonna fix it tomorrow evening. But what we can assure you is we're on state diligence, that it won't be just us. And I think together, we will get the system you expected and a system we're paying for. And then let's back right back into the city of Marta, is this community lost two hundred and twenty million dollars worth of assets back? It is very important to our business community, to our guests that come here. You know, it's your front door, right? If we expect to, to backfill our retail, we've gotta look good. We've got to provide you that service. And ultimately, if somebody else won't provide it for you, then we've got to start to step up to play ourselves and figure out how we're going to accomplish it in a very difficult time period. So, um, good discussions. Some internal staffs, a lot of people, some business people, it's a good job. We've got some good things here. So I like that. Over for, for discussion.
I'll jump right in. Uh, I do appreciate the pivot in your mindset there, uh, with regard to a better approach on resolution for a problem. I think we can all acknowledge that the bus stops in the city, the citizens do deserve better. However, the initial, um, movement thought, uh, with regard to terminating the contract, you know, as leadership, we can certainly do better than that. We can approach others, we can collaborate, we can reach out. Uh, we can, uh, build a consensus because across the county, cities have issues with bus stops, as well as the county level. I did have a conversation with Melissa Molinax today, uh, chief of staff from, uh, Marta. And she is certainly willing to, um, have Marta come out to the city council meeting and provide a presentation with regard to some of the initiatives that they are currently carrying out on the county level. So I think as a city, as leadership, we have to always remember, collaboration should be our first step and first move, rather than isolating ourselves or continuing to think that our solid thoughts are gonna be the best ones for citizens. So I do appreciate the fact that you have pivoted your thought process, uh, in order to include more stakeholders across the city as well as across the county.
Other comments?
I have as well. Thank you for that, I appreciate that because, um, my main concern is that during this time of the pandemic, there are people all over the state that have lost their jobs, people that work here in our businesses, they have only, uh, the bus service for transportation. Not only would they lose their job, but the business owner would lose good employees, which that's a hard thing to do right now, is finding good employees. And also for, as you spoke about elderly, Marty, and certain bus stops, surely if the bus stop was not there, it would be worse on the elderly to be able to get to that social security office that they so desperately need to do right now. So thank you for that, and I think the discussions and negotiations is the way to go. It is because it is a, a public service and I think we, we should, we have to do, uh, well by our, our citizens and, and also business and people passing through. It's not a subject that we can just cancel or terminate lightly.
Other questions, other comments?
Alright, sanitation? We've got that, the time off. That's all done.
Uh, I didn't know, if you wanna hear an update from Billy about the staging, uh, transition process?
That becomes a report to us, unless nobody's gonna pick up on it.
So I've actually had, uh, in internet, just some conversations with Advance and, as well as Waste Pro. We are actually looking at several sites. One happens to be behind the Piccadilly, there's a space back there, adequate enough space that we can actually stage containers and do a swap out of, uh, the Advance container to the Waste Pro. So what we're, our thought process is that we're trying to, we're communicating with the, the property owners first and foremost and see if we can get approval to use the space under some agreement that we all can agree on. And, and Advance will control their site and then Waste Pro will control their site. They will be responsible for communicating with the property owners and coming to an agreement. On average, uh, both parties have said it's gonna take every bit of about thirteen days max to get everything kind of organized and once they drop the containers, it's gonna be a fairly fast process. And so Advance has made it clear that they will stick with their original schedule for trash pickup. And on the twenty ninth, I believe, the twenty ninth or twenty sixth of October, um, they will officially, that will be their last day, they will actually start removing their containers out and Waste Pro will start putting their containers in, so.
Waste Pro, they're, they're just gonna drop their container side just in case.
Yes, well, I've got that, that is one of the discussions that we have had and the answer is yes. Uh, but they seem to think that we're gonna coordinate this so that one comes out, one goes in. We're not gonna do them all at one time. So on a, on a given date, there's gonna be a certain area that we're gonna focus attention on, no differently than what we're doing with trash pickup. So they will, they will remove out and then they will, they will put in. But I'm working with both parties right now. We've had a conversation with, uh, the, the owner of the Piccadilly's, uh, we're awaiting some feedback. And then we thought, uh, Expo Logistics has a spot big enough to accommodate, uh, accommodate the other party. So they'll be separated, but they'll both be moving in the same direction at the same time. So you pull one out and then you put one in. And so that's, uh, that's the plan going forward.
Any other questions about sanitation?
Now, one of the other things is you remember as a, as a residential customer, you know, your fees are gonna change pretty quickly depending on the service you're looking for. So if you're paying ninety-five dollars for a, you know, like, you go out, forty-eight dollars for the system. So it's kind of part of half, but that's a, that's a pretty good option for you. And then if you want to continue to, if you want to do that as well, and that's a little more expensive, but still less than what you're paying today.
And just a reminder that the recycled carts are gonna be picked up from your house and we are not continuing with the recycling program. So we, uh, I just wanted to make sure we're clear that Waste Pro isn't bringing a recycling cart as we're no longer doing the recycling program.
And not, you know, come also cost a lot when we should have, um, you know, a bill, put a location to our customer, letting them know that we're really swapping, changing, becoming a provider and we're willing to consume as often as possible.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so Angela, you were saying notification with all the bills.
Everyone's read the D.R.O.S. section there. Is it exactly one for a vote at the next council meeting?
We anticipate getting a response from the attorney who wanted to review the articles.
For sure.
Yes, yes, sir.
For those who kind of changed to read, it would be important to move that forward. Think of that as a vote basis, you're going to tell local tax and being able to implement some of the... The Adnars?
Well, just for clarity, because this was a question that I was asked, that it's destination marketing organization. The law says DNO, not DNA. So just I was causing some confusion. The... So the law recognizes destination marketing organization. Whatever we call ours is up to us, but that's what the law recognizes.
Got it. All right. And picking up the other, you know, we had some discussions earlier about the two magazines plus the really, the Facebook ads. And I know that there were some discussions. I found additional opportunities. And I heard Creative Loafing, and I heard that Land Business Conference might be expanding.
Well, and so...
But I don't know if the numbers are set.
So waiting for the numbers and also, like I said before, meeting space, putting that type of Marta Center in trade organizations, whether it's... Clayton County is an industrial hub. If there's a relevant industrial trade magazine, or if there's a relevant bridal association or meeting plan in the magazine, let's go after that as well. Let's to cast a larger net because we haven't addressed between the two magazines that are in the meeting agenda today. We've addressed something very specific, so let's cast our net even further. Be intentional, just as intentional about that.
And this is a student, Steve Warren, so we'll check for this.
And I do want to say that Warren was able to secure a contract with QT that led to a contract that like their HR department talked to FedExes. And so now FedEx is interested in some long-term, I mean, weekly rentals for a few months. So that's... It's like a sort of a market we didn't think about, was the gas station and, you know, courier market. So every lead should lead us to doing more connection, and I love the industrial trade magazine idea. So we'll have those numbers for you at the next meeting.
And I don't think any of those were mentioned in the... Remember, we've done a series. We both had the private sector coming in as well. Maybe several recommendations, and tons of different things. We really didn't like too much of that. We didn't have staff making recommendations. Most of that was either not the right time, such as airport, or anything.
Yes, sir.
And then I also believe, is this correct, that we've not really spent a lot of money actually marketing the conference center?
I'm sorry?
We've not actually spent any money marketing the conference center.
Yeah, I mean, nominal money. There's not been any funded, you know, sort of big effort to market the Marta Center in my knowledge since it was open.
And why that's important for those in the audience that are just keeping track of things, on average, we're dealing with our financials that depending on what you all include in it, your conference center is usually anywhere from $13,000 to $15,000 a month. If you add the campaigns in there from the satellite, that's $20,000. So we want to, you know, be able to move that forward and be able to at least probably as a primary objective, make sure that that happens. And some of that is utilities, by the way, but some of it is also sap. Any other questions related to those? All right, you guys, tell us a little bit about Lowe's outlet and Popeyes.
So we know that there is a Lowe's outlet going where... Mark's still here. Of course. It's... Well, maybe one way is so there's the Goodwill store is going where H.H. Gregg was. And then, yeah, so I guess it was Old Navy and I was right there. The Lowe's outlet is coming. They will actually be open before the Goodwill. Lowe's outlet will be open before Christmas. Goodwill will not be open until the turn of the new year. And then Popeyes, they are looking to build from the ground up just here along Jonesboro Road between the Switching Station and the Titleway. There's a piece of property. It's actually a sort of a deep piece of property. They're going to, you know, they brought us a concept. I think I've shared it with you. It's in the packet even. So, and that will likely take some consideration from the planning and zoning board too. But yeah, you know, of course, any new construction is...
And for those of you members of the planning, basically what I'm trying to announce too is that the current section is a little bit more mixed. So what we're trying to do is to say the front can be used for, you know, a brand-new constructed restaurant. Then the back half of the property gets reserved for some point for maybe a residential use. And certainly the property is back there. So a little bit of a slight take. You'll have the opportunity to hear that and presentations made typically. New construction around 54 would be nice. Other questions related to that? SPOS updates, and I guess the first question I had for that is, you know, there was a question as to whether some of the general entry entries, you know, make that data accurate.
So Angela? Yes, it is. I think one of the things in your SPOS 2014 is we have the Jester Creek project in there. It's included in there, and that you're going to have some money for that project coming from the DOT. Is it a T or a T? Well, you're talking about the reimbursement. So we did work to repair the path, right, with Georgia Development Department. And part of the agreement was is that we would pay for all of the materials upfront.
We've already done that.
Yeah. Well, and it's been a series of votes over the last, like, year and a half. So there will be some reimbursement that's coming back to us for those materials. They'll be paying in installations over 24 months. And so that will be, those expenditures you see in your SPOS on the P and L, those aren't really accurate because at some point we're going to be getting like $115,000 of that path.
And then I believe in our conversation we had before, City Fire Department had a certain amount of money that was already allocated to some type of SPOS, 300,000 or something.
Well, just, I mean, just remember, at this point, we would not purchase anything that you guys, this current council hasn't voted on.
It's a past expenditure that was one of those items that we're looking at.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. It was the SWF helping out because I'm always forgetting what it is.
The radios?
The radios and that tone. You remember how we had to resolve that issue about?
Right. We had allocated $50,000 and spent $250,000.
Yeah. It was... So unless I'm...
I think there was a number retirement that was on 300,000.
I will research that and get that to you.
And then the next process is the sidewalks on Lake Como. And make sure that that was included. And then obviously, the next phase of the trail system, timing of the backup skyline. What I just want to make sure is that the numbers are accurate from the standpoint we're not spending the same money twice.
Sure.
If you see a number that's remaining or hasn't been allocated, then you know that's what's left in that SPOS line. But if you're... If it's not listed specifically, it's more than dollars.
Well, and so remember the phase, I guess really it's ultimately Phase 5 if you count the smaller phases. But the current path system being built is primarily grant-funded. And so it's not all coming from the SPOS. It would just be our match funds that would be coming from the SPOS.
Correct. It was $146,000 for the timing of West Village. That was PJ?
Oh, yes, yes, sir. Over, under the power line. Yeah, yes, sir.
So let's assume all those and some type of number, and get those things laid out so that it gives us what's left.
Okay. Do you foresee maybe voting on this list and then not having to come back individually every time, once it's voted on?
Well, this particular list, the list was referred to by Martin. We just want to identify it so that we know where they are and we know where the balance is. So the projects are pretty much agreeing on, right? They're not building right now, but most of them. So it's mostly in the calendar, which we'll say it's got to be business eventually to see. And then we can have a new balance.
So we don't have an unrealistic idea about how much money is left because some of it's already spoken.
I want to think we got two billion down there.
Exactly. There is one little, there is one thing. You've got too much cash. That is not a bad thing. In the SPOS 2014, we actually got more cash than you have expenditures. What's happened is I think over the, from the time the grant started, not grant, from when the SPOS started out, people were charging things to the general fund instead of directly to SPOS. And then it would do a journal entry to move it from SPOS, from the general fund over to SPOS. And you've got to also move the money around too. So for example, in your 2015, in your audit report from 2015, it's reporting $214,000 of SPOS expenditures. When you run the GL, it's nothing. There's nothing there. There's no expenditures. There's no revenue. But I located what the expenditures were, but they were still sitting in the general fund. So I think the probably intent was to probably move them from the general fund over to SPOS and then have SPOS pay the general fund back. So that, and then there's something else that occurred in 2018. It's short by about $17,000, probably the same thing. Because if you're not moving, if you're not, they should have just charged the money directly to SPOS and, you know, and cut manual checks for it, but that wasn't what was happening. It was being put in the general fund and then moved over to the SPOS account with the journal entry. And then at some point, they'll start paying the general fund back. But somewhere that didn't happen. And so that's why you have more money in SPOS, right, cash than we really should have because I believe some of that money is owed back to the general fund.
How did you accomplish that with already completed books from the different odds?
Yeah, I don't know. I think what happened with, maybe in 2016, they may have run the expenditure, that expenditure that did show up in 2015 through the fund balance. And when you run it through the fund balance, you're not going to add, it's never going to be reflected in your expense account somewhere. I had to do the same thing with your 2019 SPOS. It was out by like $81,000, but I found where it was. It was an account that got labeled as a balance sheet account instead of expense account in the software. And so it came up. It was hitting the balance sheet account, not hitting the expense account. And so the only way for me to fix it this year was to run it through the, run it through fund balance. But on this sheet, on this SPOS sheet, detailed sheet that you're getting, I reflected that amount in there, like it was for like a demolition of an auto shop or something. So I reflected that expenditure in there. And the expenditures for, from 2015 that didn't get reflected or didn't get recorded properly, I would say, is going to be, it was $58,000 for a Lee Street striping project, $34,000, $186 for a Public Works roof replacement, and $121,270 expenditure for police roof replacement or so. But before that, I guess in this process of getting ready for the audit, we'll get all that straightened out and get the money back where it's supposed to be.
And then in terms of just the regular list and in terms of different projects that we're going to do, like the general, can we accomplish that? This is a project, this is what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what, this is what this reflects. I had to go back through the, I went back through the... It's not in the packet. It's a separate... Oh, it's not in the packet. Oh, okay. I thought you put it in that. We have a detail. I went back through the general ledger.
Right, I have. It's a whole lot more like math.
Oh, okay. No, I've got one that's like very detailed, but I went back through it and found all expenditures that were related to the 2014 SPOS, and we've got them listed and stuff.
And we may have a...
Yeah, and it may actually be, but we'll make sure because there are SPOS spreadsheets in your packet. We just want to make sure that we're all talking all from the same...
Yes, it is. It is in the packet. It's right after the Popeyes.
I mean, I had that same question you had about the audit or if it's not. I don't know.
This is SPOS 2014 expenditure. So it starts with the 2018?
Yes.
And then 2014 after.
Just using an example, you know, we're talking about the sidewalk project. Can you point that out? You said it was partially from the front, right?
Oh, the path system? Yes, sir.
We don't see the sidewalk project. We don't see that. But I got to a small little...
I'd be free to start anything. I don't think we passed Phase 3. Any kind of road sidewalk?
There is. What was the potential cost? Isn't that about 300,000?
On the light carbon?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that when you found the Tyco on and it actually went down?
No, it was followed by that six, seven, five, ten, three, fourteen, oh, four.
Doesn't look like that's enough because that is wholly SPOS funded, not partially grant-funded.
So it'd be the whole... About $300,000 or something. And that's, I think, is a little small.
That's Phase 3 of the path system.
Well, the light carbon, if we're talking about the light carbon sidewalks, it is, if that doesn't, I'd have to look at the light because it's...
What I'm thinking right there is that's an engineering condition.
Four, four phase grid.
Yes, the engineering as well as the construction should be included.
So we've got, we don't have any algorithm related to the original cost, but it has to be cost.
Where do you get this cost, Angela?
What you want now is the actual expenses, which is fine. What it does have is the amount of money you have to spend, right? So you're going to have to spend, you're certainly allocated.
So you're saying from the original budget line, where it says original estimated cost, I would prefer to see a breakdown of the original estimated cost below that in that estimated cost?
Not necessary. But on one end, you're looking at it as cash, right? And that's basically, you're totally shut up. What's the actual spending?
But you just asked about the estimated cost.
I do, because it says the original estimated cost and current estimated cost. So there's your...
Correct. So my question was, you know, would you prefer to see the estimated cost broken out in that column?
Yes, because if you read all of that, it's basically giving you a sub, and then a sub to one of your equipment. That's the same as 350,000. If you have 40,000 spent, then that means you don't talk by 300,000.
So my question was a clarified question so that we would all understand when did the general where that you're saying you don't see practice. With regard to the estimated cost, and you responded, I appreciate that.
But there's absolutely not written in it.
Correct.
If you're down below and you see just a street range and we have 1.4 million, then we know kind of what the question is.
Correct. Another question.
And this one, we've already approved, right? So it's kind of a guess where we know it's going to be 300,000. We don't have any other questions, Eric, but let's just continue until we get it, okay? All right, tell us a little bit more about the microbrewery ordinance.
So we had, I had conversations with Clayton County Economic Development Department, Erica. And we were talking about, just as we try to attract, you know, businesses from across the gamut, if we had an interest, and it was the will of the council to develop, have a development that included a microbrewery. And so my response was like, yeah, you know, if you find people that are interested, let them know that we would be interested, but we haven't changed our code to really address it. And so her advice is if the council wants to consider these businesses, you need to...
He wants to serve beer and wine with his pizza, but technically, we have a code that regulates distance in such a way from churches and schools that he can't do it. It's not the state's code, it's our code. So this, um, this, so it's twofold. It's expanding the opportunity for a micro brewery to come here, and it's expanding a, a restaurant that serves beer and wine, not spirits, because that is regulated by the state. The opportunity to do so, um, without being constrained by the current distance requirements.
Those who don't know what a micro brewery, if we're not talking about it, it's not a huge plant, this, this is, these chains have gotten much, much smaller, and they're making them in small batches, um, so those that want a more flavorful, you know, experience, um, you can buy them, you can buy them on tap, and in some cases they're putting them in facilities that might be teed with thousands of square feet in the back. So, you know, make sure that we look at, give them the zone code and make sure it's gonna be in appropriate areas to develop those.
That's right, and, and this was, um.
At least some risk, if there's, it'll take a little further than trying to create it by the eyes of which is.
No, it limits the number of barrels.
Okay, okay. Any questions related to the ordinance?
Um, we mentioned, or I, I asked about the micro pub, the one that would serve food or whatever, so are we having just the brewery that, or is it a combination?
That's what I'm talking about, the difference is, is that a restaurant that serves it is the micro, might be the micro pub, but the micro brewery is the one that's actually creating it on premises.
Right, okay.
And you got a ground copy of the ordinance as well, and any other questions? And where'd you pull this ordinance from, just in case?
Well, we, we actually used Joan, uh, the city of Jonesboroughs, uh, but we've pulled from some other cities too, um.
What, where's Jonesborough putting in a brewer?
They're at the old fire station.
Right.
Or, I think it's a museum, it was a, served as a museum for a while.
Sounds fun.
Yeah.
And they've got the, the Dr. Sherwood, I have to take that, pretty close.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
I need a brew too.
What's that? All right. We're good. Um, I'm, I'm gonna let Billy talk, just so that he can go if he wants to after that. So obviously, for those of you that have, that have public works, and he has a series of things that he's gonna bring us up to speed on, and, uh, let's see.
Right, that's a problem. Okay, so there's a list of things that we've been working on public works. Um, I have one, uh, bulk waste pickup. Uh, we've pretty much come up with a plan, and as I mentioned earlier, we've got a strategy that we're gonna roll out, uh, so that we can ensure that the bulk waste is picked up. Once we cut our contract over to the new contract, uh, it'll be picked up on a schedule, uh, and it will be divided by streets, um, that will allow us to, uh, pick up the waste consistently. What residents will have to do is learn us on your day of pickup, if you do have a waste that needs to be bulk, uh, bulk or pre-waste that needs to be picked up, and we'll have a team that actually goes out and will retrieve that, and we will process it through and get it to the landfill, no different than what's being happened by Advance right now. Are you, pretty much you wanted to know about all the items on the list?
I'll pick the highlights, I don't.
Okay.
Just, just a question.
Ask a question about bulk pickup. So what are we doing with that, and what is the cost for that disposal of that bulk pickup?
Well, that's a very good question, we're looking at costs now. What Advance is doing is they have three containers that they have strategically placed throughout the city. They actually pick up the bulk waste. Some of it is compacted in their truck, but a lot of it is actually picked up and placed in containers. Then that container is taken to the landfill and is processed through. We're in the process of getting the final numbers from the landfill on costs associated with every yard containers, because that's what we normally use, uh, when we take waste to the landfill. So we will, I'll get that information, definitely have it readily available to the city manager before the end of day tomorrow, uh, so that we'll know specifically what's gonna cost the city to do the processing of the waste once we retrieve it from the resident's yard.
However, um, we, we, when we did the budget, you know, remember, there is a price per ton, right?
Correct.
So that's gonna be one of the biggest drivers in the cost. And we budgeted making some, um, we researched some estimates, right, which was how many times we had gone to the, when we used to do bulk pickup, how many times a week did we go? How many tons did we usually haul? And then if, if that was, if the trend held true, then how much would it cost? So I, I think that it is, we've already got an estimated number, but we aren't going to know until we actually start doing it, how on target we were.
And, and the great thing is I've actually gone out and do, and kind of surveyed to get a pulse of what's truly going on with yard waste and then the pickup process. Mondays, of course, is your heavy estate. People actually came to their yards on Saturdays, Friday, Saturday, and Sundays, so they put the, uh, yard waste to the corners, uh, on Saturday or late Sunday afternoon. So we anticipate Monday and Tuesday will be our two heavy estates. Then it'll throttle back once the Thursday party, and then it'll roll back around on Monday, where we'll have another, same amount of yard waste. So we anticipate some challenges along the way, but we feel pretty certain with the team that we'll have in place and some of the equipment that we, we have and what we planned up for, that we'll be able to pick that waste up. Um, I'm definitely following up on Marvel Center utilities. We did receive, uh, the electric bill. The number was down significantly as a result of identifying the culprit that was creating the problem, which is a compressor on the major unit that's servicing the ballworks. So we're actively getting some additional pricing. I should have that finalized by tomorrow afternoon, that pretty much says this is the cost associated with replacing a faulty compressor that's creating problems. So that's, that's gonna be a way in course. As it relates to looking at the remainder of the buildings that we need to assess for energy efficiencies, um, we've already started that turn. We've, we started with a portion of the old church building, because there's some activity that we think we might have there. We've also started looking at the fire station. What we're finding is somewhat similar to what most of the municipalities across the board are identifying. Uh, we've got, for example, this room, the lights are fluorescent tubes, they're THG5s, those can be easily transformed to LEDs. If you've got carbon and other materials that have been placed for a period of time, they're actually putting off off gases that will clean up some of that, which will help the HVAC systems. Uh, we're looking at all of the HVAC systems, the air compressors, we're looking at belts, uh, we're looking at all of the items that we seem to think are things that are gonna contribute to increasing the cost associated with the bill, and we're throttling back, and we're making recommendations to the city manager in the form of cost per year to go in and try to modify, as opposed to trying to bite off everything in one screw. So we're in a good process. We, we seem to think that we'll have all of the sites completely looked at by end of December, early January. We'll present a full-on, uh, cost proposal that outlines all the items that we need to address in all of the different facilities going forward, which would make it a lot easier for us to kind of get these things down. Um, if you've been on Lake Harbor, we've put ballworks in it, uh, they seem to be working pretty decent. Uh, we have lost one as a result of someone hitting it, and we went out and replaced it, but for the most part it is somewhat controlling traffic. We did have an incident whereby an accident did occur as a result of some of the changes, but that section, uh, that was something that was well needed as, as it relates to the way that traffic flows in that area, so it is controlled and held now considerable. We are aggressively assessing streetlights. Uh, we've been running through the neighborhoods. We do have a massive number of what we call mangoo's lights. The, the mangoo's light is a light that's attached to a wooden pole. Those lights are sodium lights. They burn a lot of electricity. George Power has come back and said, guess what? Finding parts and pieces to those lights are becoming very hard for us. So they're gonna aggressively start switching out those lights with LEDs, as well as the original streetlights. Um, they hit some of the residents, some of the neighborhoods, excuse me, so they'll be hitting, uh, a lot more of those here within the next month or so. Um, thank you, sir. We have started our parks evaluations, um, and basically what we're doing there is assessing a number of things. We're looking at vegetation, we're looking at condition of the grass, we're looking at the conditions of the playground. And what we found was, we've got to be quick with that data, and the city manager and I, the mayor have had some conversations, and we, they've given us some clear directions going forward on modifications that we can make that are not so expensive. Uh, so within the next probably ninety days or less, you should start seeing some things changing in the parks, as well as at the, uh, different signs into the subdivisions. We see a need to do some things a little bit different there, seeking some assistance from, um, the reserve of the road to, uh, give a feedback on native vegetation that we can put in that will assist to bring some light and color into the parks. So we're pretty excited about that. And then, uh, the, the last one that I think everyone's gonna be very appreciative of is, um, coming off of I-75, um, at one point years ago, there were signs that were directional signs that when you came off the interstate, they kind of sent you where you needed to go as it related to the different, uh, businesses that you would might want to visit. Um, I have entered into a very, very big conversation with a, uh, a company that is going to assist us in developing some, uh, I would say, welcome to Marvel signs that I think would really enhance the look of the exit, or excuse me, the entry points into the city, and I think it would really be a bonus for us. And so at this stage of the game, I've already had the contractor to start on conceptual drawings, and I'd like to get with mayor and council and, and the city manager and actually start talking about what does that look like, what does the build, like, we definitely wanna add some lights to it, so that at night, when you pull off the interstate, you know that you're in Marvel. So we're gonna really focus a lot on that. We've got a lot going on at, at public works is, is, uh, we're actually making some really good headway. We're getting ready to hire in, uh, two additional volumes, which is gonna assist us in, in taking the department to another level. I keep telling the staff, it's a big piece of pie. Uh, we're not gonna eat the whole thing, but what we're gonna do is we're gonna cut off those slippers, and we're gonna eat a little bit at a time, and we're gonna get the wins, and we're gonna celebrate the wins, and then from there, we're just gonna continue to grow and improve and, you know, take down some of the things that we need to take down to make the city look even better than what it looks like.
Questions for, before we get into the city?
Um.
Questions, please.
I do. Um, we recently, uh, well, a while back, you know, we had a extremely heavy rain in, um, Meadowbrook, Dusty Park over there. What's happening over there? I see that, um.
I think that was a storm, a storm training.
Yeah, it, yeah, I actually reached out to the county. We met inside, they did some assessments. What they said that, uh, up at the top of the mall, uh, where the brewery is, there's a retention pond. A lot of debris had gotten into the pond. It made its way down to the choke point, and once it got there, it just pretty much clogged that, that pipe there, uh, which restricted the water below the pipe, which overflowed onto the road. Since then, they're in the process of coming up with, uh, a plan to firm up that shoreline so that if that happens again, we don't lose a lot of the red clay. So I'm working with an individual there, and she gets up here and receives.
But in the most, and I think I sent you all a text, in the most recent deluge, we didn't have deflating because the, it had been unblocked, right?
That is correct. We have.
Not traditionally a part that, we know Corralos and some of these others do, but that isn't one or so.
Yeah, one of the things I did ask was, is there any modifications we can make to that area? The answer is no. Their concern is that if we modify that area, it's gonna create a choke point somewhere else down the line. So they're saying that they can do some things, but they're kind of limited on what they can do.
Um, one other thing, on Argon and Meadowbrook, when it rains, you know, that stop sign right there on the corner of Argon and Meadowbrook, the street is always flooded. I think there isn't an adequate drain over there for that water that's coming from Argon onto Meadowbrook, and it's right on the corner. It's always cooling there heavily. So I, I don't know what we.
There's a storm right there, it's just not draining.
Yeah, that's a very good question. The answer is probably yes. One of the things that I have noted is, the majority of our storm drains have a lot of debris, uh, which has gathered over time. For example, leaves fall off the tree, they make it through the drain, they pile up, next thing you know, there's a little dirt that starts to pile up, next thing you know, you have vegetation going out of the dirt. So one of the things that we're gonna do this fall is, once the grass slows down, where we don't have to mow this for a week, is we're gonna mow those, and we're also gonna get stormwater involved, insisting us to make sure the drains are all cleared. That will help everything below the weight suspension, always in that place.
And I think that's partially water, because you're.
That is correct.
Because you're paying the stormwater fee, you know, that's a part of.
Yep. And they're happy to come out, but you have to tell them where the drains are.
Other questions? And what, what about the interstate lighting? Did we, did that kind of solve?
Uh, yes. Uh, George Power completed all of the interstate lighting. They've, uh, come out and worked with Gene Edwards, and we basically got all the lights repaired, uh, got all the holes repaired. Uh, we did have a little snuff where they weren't on the right timers, we got that correctly. Uh, so everything that needs to be done that pertains to the lights on I-75, as well as the lights beneath, um, the bridge are all taken care of.
All right.
Um, so we, we're ready to go there.
Ready to go, are they on?
Sir?
Are they ready to go, are they on?
They're on. They're all on, yeah.
Big, big question.
So recently I, I was coming in at night, and I let Billy know that the whole right side was off and the whole left side was on, but it was that timer issue that they had to fix.
What they did was they, on one side, they were working on one side, so they took electrical tape and actually covered up the, uh, I that controls the lights that turn them off on, and I, so we removed the tape, reset the timer, and they're all working the same.
On, on average, our hotels are operating about fifty, sixty percent, just to give you an idea. So the person coming off that interstate, you know, that's their lifeline, um, it's gotta look good, it's gotta be, you know, walkable, safe, and that, so we're going to do questions we can to keep them in business, and, you know, make a little room yourself. Any other questions related to that?
One more. Did you get a proposal for the orders yet, or how we, where are we for that, clearing that vegetation?
As far as the vegetation on I-75, or vegetation.
For the cleaning up around the lights, so we can.
That, that is already been done. George Power actually had a pervaded place to clean that vegetation as part of them remaking the repairs to the light, they actually cleaned that, so that's been done.
The other one you're talking about is opening a provisionally I-75.
Right.
From the sound, so I don't think that's been done.
No, because remember, it has to be G.D.O. approved, although we spoke to Richard Wilton today, and, and you'll be interested in this, mayor, because it's a little, a lot different than what they told us on the side of the road that day.
Well, so basically what we have to do is, um, there's a. So basically what we have to do is, there's a permit called special encroachment application that we need to fill out. Once we fill that application out, G. Dot, since they're representative now, we actually look at all of the right away from I-75 down to the string. And then there's a small buffer on the backside of the string that we also take into consideration. G. Dot comes in and they will actually mark all of the vegetation we can remove. And they will allow us to also shore up some of the trees and open it up so you've got better lighting in there, so the vegetation that should be there will go away at least. So the application, if everything goes as planned, we'll have that in by end of the day tomorrow. Richard Mountain has, or excuse me, Richard Littleton is asking to reach out to him once I put the application in. He's going to meet me, Tree Service Company, and we're going to all meet outside and we're going to walk the space and we're going to mark everything that we didn't mark that he's come out here. And then we'll have a secondary conversation about the vegetation that's closest to Oldtown Marrow that we will have to address and we can get the contract to deal with the plan and that also.
I'm trying to, the word is just a little bit.
Yeah, I know, right. So the difference is, is that we had understood that we had to submit a plan and that G. Dot would approve the plan. But it seems now from this more intimate discussion is that we apply for an encroachment permit and then they come, G. Dot comes and identifies and marks what we can take down and then we take it down, which is much easier than submitting a plan for approval, in my opinion.
So we're not meeting an arborist anymore?
No, well, an arborist is AKA, they'll be the ones taking it down.
Okay.
But it's the agronomist from G. Dot that will mark it, which is like an arborist fused with something you may know. I've never heard the word agronomist.
I hope it was a guy we met out there with.
Yeah.
They seemed to be an understanding itself.
Yeah.
And he was very pleasant with regards to the whole conversation. He said, listen, once you've turned in and decided now, we'll kind of, we'll mark and you guys can go to work. Great thing is, all the vegetation that's big enough that we can actually mulch, the vendors don't mulch it, you'll create a mulch pile that we can use elsewhere throughout the city on the trail. They do a few things.
Except those gardeners, they can't have any of it.
Is it on? All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, that being said, it runs a little bit late, but I'll call the regular meeting of the Boston City Council September 22nd. Let's continue in our little, little, measure here. So this is where we were talking about future events and trying to make sure that they're behind that, for the most part, and this is what we want to start to look at some things. When you start talking about city municipal editors, different things like that, coordination, pretty much we're just taxing.
I'm ready to surrender.
I mean, but I think at some point, you know, as much as, you've got to have a coordinated event, right? There just has to be somebody who pays attention. And whether that's part of what we've got going on in the conference center or somebody over there that can start to help out on occasion, I don't know that we have a plan. It's either we do or schedule an event that's not run very well, but still has our name on it, right?
I would, of course, argue at that point, but I agree.
Okay.
And of course Jasmine helps a lot on the events and we have, you know, other staff members that would get involved and, but all of that being said, I think that especially when we start to look at expanding our signature events, possibly adding a, you know, Juneteenth and a film festival, I mean, we just can't keep absorbing all of the responsibilities and logistically keeping up with all the stuff. And so, yeah, I mean, I think, and I know I've talked to some of you about this, I think that we're at the point where we need to hire somebody in some capacity, be it full-time, part-time, to take over the events, to be the lead, because they're never going to be able to do it alone, we're still going to have to, you know.
Well, we do like a part-time, start with, like, maybe a contractor of some sort, you know, I've paid the benefit package to get with.
Right.
And our benefit package is now not cheap. So, and then can I pull some of that from product development? In other words, can I get some seed money?
Absolutely.
To pull from there and then see how it works.
Absolutely. But, I mean, I would say your signature events, other than your welcome center, your signature events are probably the most paramount for product development. I mean, that is the, you're becoming a city that identifies itself possibly as a series of events and you're attracting people from the outside, absolutely you could use product development.
Well, one of our hotels stated, and I'm just going to tell you what they told me, that their occupancy percent was thirty percent. I find that unlikely, but horrifying if it's even remote yet. All the other hotels are basically saying they're operating at fifty, sixty percent. And we do get hotel tax, so the question is, you know, if that's just a way to sandbag it and kind of do things in your mind. But all of we're looking for, you know, partnering, you know, kind of like in the old days, right? Where you had quarterly meetings and we talked about, you know, what is it that we have? One of them brought in, you know, one of these old brochures that showed you how to travel around the city and just paid for that. And I said, well, okay, but what's your distribution? How do you get that book in somebody's hand? Which that is solved by our app, right, in terms of what's coming there. But it, it, and then remembered the day of the dead, you know, Chamber of Commerce in terms of some of that. And it was like, is this possible to expand until a holding day? And he said, it's possible, it's obviously not going to happen this year. And as we, you know, attend that, you know, because you have a multi-day event, I think that obviously you have to spend that in a hotel that opens our hotel versus Stockbridge or something like that. So there's, there's that. Now, some of these we realize are still city events. So I guess the first question is, and this is just a comfort level for me, is, I want these events to be well attended and I want them to, not just a partial effort, right? I want somebody that, you know, pays attention to that's what they do, you know, that's the phone number they get. And if you're consistently answering that call, then, you know, that to me is of lesser value than my city management. In fact, and we've got a lot going on, right? So we just need something along those lines. So if you want to run something with the session, if the council doesn't have an objection, then we think about a part-time thought process and I don't know what that dollar value really runs to, but if you give us, you know, kind of your thoughts on that and, I don't know, is this, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars at fair enough?
I mean.
Part-time basis, I don't want, you know, somebody just sitting there holding up the walls for someone.
Well, it, so, you know, there is always going to be that threshold of expectation. So what we'll first need to do is make sure that we're all talking about the same thing, right? So let's say if you walk out with the understanding that we're about to hire a part-time person to sell the Marrow Center space, or you walk out with an expectation that the person we're about to hire is going to take over the newsletter, because at some point with a limited number of hours, they're not going to be able to do all the stuff we could easily put on them. So that's all I'm saying is like, you know, we just need.
It's still fair to say, you know, a half a donut is better than no donut at all.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. I just want to make sure it's not like the minute somebody new is brought on board, then, oh, we can do that to that, to that. I mean, I'm all for it, but we just, we just want to think about, think that through and what is it going to be and who are they going to answer to and those kinds of things.
Right.
Easy to do, just some conversations that we need to have, so.
We need to, we need something.
Yeah.
And I just, I think our opportunity is greater than what we're applying. And if we use those funds, it might be difficult to use, say, South Save Halloween, right? That's a little bit more of a city event. But some of this other stuff is not, right? If we really, you know, push it to a different level, sometimes, even what we were talking about for the veterans, right? These folks don't do events further, right? So you've got to have somebody who does that every day that makes them feel very comfortable but yet backs it up with the phone calls to be able to get the van and get the general or speaker.
Right, and I will say we could.
Or to control our own citizens to some degree.
Right. It's helping coordinate people, because you don't want to lose the Veterans Day, what makes it so special is the combination of the, it's, everybody's welcome, but it still has a very intimate feel to it. And so, you know, if it's just a checklist where I'm calling the people, but definitely coordinating the effort, it would help, because it's just, you know, it would really take me out of the equation altogether, except for a very oversight. It would take Jasmine out of the equation altogether, except for oversight. And again, like I say, because we've got really a stack of seven signature events at the end of the day and we're about to start adding to it.
And that doesn't include, let's assume newsletter, let's assume any types of things, business section.
I guess what I would worry is if the combination included selling the Marrow Center space.
No, I think that's going to be your economic.
Because then how would I say, well, if you're taking all my hours through all this stuff, I can't sell the space, right? Exactly.
I mean, unless I miss it, but I think we were talking about, you know, something a little different there. We're not putting, you know, tourism director in the space and creating law space, we're trying to work with private sector and see if we can't get something moving.
Sure.
Coffee shop or something. So that falls in the category of about, right?
But it would still be, you still intend to rent the space out for parties on the weekends or at night, right?
Depends on what segment.
Well, yeah, and what's your agreement is.
If they're picking up the space and paying the freight, then we'll move that to something ourselves. So, you know, reasonable enough and then, you know, and I'd say quasi-tufold, one is, you know, you've got the event center space, let's call it that for lack, but we're in the infancy of that, right? But we got to, we know that it's presently candid up and that must be reserved, we said they have the ability to do it. But that's a, if we do it all, what's the budget?
You don't have the exhibit space.
Exhibit space is correct.
And that is the dark spaces.
Yes. But we need, we need a little bit more of a plan, right? And we don't want that too crazy, but, you know, somewhere in there, there's an answer for that. But pitch it.
Okay.
And let's see what makes sense. So I don't know if we, you know, move talent around to be able to accomplish that objective. In other words, we still will add you the additional man-hours, but, you know, if you've got somebody that's already capable of doing that part, you know, let's put it all on the table and see what happens. Then let's look at the actual events on the run. Council retreat, November 7th, did we get that lady lined up for that?
So I spoke to her, has she, Maria?
Ms. Lamb?
Yeah, Ms. Lamb, yeah, yeah, yeah. So we had, I spoke with her yesterday, she was going to send us a resume, but I don't think she's gotten it to us yet.
And she is available on that day.
Okay, so she is available on that day. And then.
And the entire council of Riverdale.
Yeah, I think everybody had said they were available on the Saturday.
The jury is reserved.
And I know you said you wanted it earlier, you were available all Saturdays, but not everybody was, so we, November 7th.
I said I would be flexible, so.
So she'll, she'll send a resume and we'll share that with everybody and then, you know, it's just a matter of you building the agenda.
I think we talked about, you know, having her reach out there.
Yeah, she'll talk to everybody individually before the retreat.
I think once we get that information back, kind of mindset, that would be pretty good agenda for that.
And we shared with her the past two years, the retreats, the agendas and the summaries. And again, it's like, when I was telling her, it's like, our expectation is not that you've duplicated, it's just giving you some, some general information, so.
All right, all right. Then just walk down a little bit, so we already talked about Veterans Day, Cleveland Municipal Association meetings, obviously it was a staff review day.
And it's Thursday.
Thursday.
I mean, we weren't the only ones, so College Park was down there with us as well.
And I can't believe College Park came and then it was canceled.
They didn't notify anyone.
I know, yeah.
By the way, we were the only people that had had our MVP.
Well, I mean, they're, this is Riverdale's rookie team and, you know, obviously Ms. Casey's shot.
So that's cool, I mean, so is anybody able to go tomorrow night, I mean, Thursday night?
I guess, I guess I think I'll be there.
Well, I sent out an email, but only, I think, Councilwoman Knight responded.
I don't know.
Titty, titty.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Well, especially once somebody changes it, you know, your participation is going to drop through the floor and then they also, you know, requesting some type of in-person as well as, you know, some type of, you know, teleconferencing ability.
Oh, it's going to be a combination?
It is.
Yes, they sent out the Zoom information just.
That's going to be, and that, they're going to write to City Hall to be able to do that. So that's basically a box lunch over a boardroom table. So you could get a little more participation just by watching them on the Zoom. Then I saw an email, you know, I think it was from the city of Johnsboro, basically questioning whether all the cities had agreed to some changes. And I had no idea with that, it's not as if the last board meeting, so.
Well, if you remember, and when they gave you that, that contractor agreement, that nobody had signed. And so what I said was, they're, you know, and their best intentions, absolutely, but they're working from an agreement that we cannot confirm was ever executed between any city. And so that's what Johnsboro's position, as I understand it, and I certainly don't mean to speak for Johnsboro, was that they too wanted to understand who agreed to the changes and what were they.
Good question, but you've got to remember this particular group doesn't even know what the situation was.
That's what I'm saying, and to your point, you're not sure they know that.
Right, so, you know, municipalities got together and said, let's work together, let's have a conversation. We obviously know we have service delivery strategy, it was done in the seventies.
Right.
You know, so it goes way back, but these guys don't have any information, there's not like a big packet that comes with it.
Right, and I think they're just trying to, you know, start at, you know.
They're trying to get it.
Starting it up again.
And they're, you know, it's not the mayor over there that's running it, that's got the most experience over there, this is their rookie team.
Yeah.
And, that's a rookie statement. But I think it's, you know, one of their big questions was how do we get better participation? And I'm like, if you focus on that participation concept for the next few months, because we'll transfer a lot of garbage in I-90 in January, then that's a win, right?
And after this, it's just a Christmas party, right? Oh, now they, they scheduled some more to make.
And they're almost back-to-back program. And I tell my knowledge, they didn't even have speakers. That, I think that.
Well, I bet, I can, I understand that, because why would you schedule speakers until you've gotten a little bit momentum for people to even show up? You don't want speakers to come and nobody be there.
I disagree with you, it's just, but it was unique. But, you know, support as best you can, you know, there's still a period somewhere else and we'll do the best we can. All right, see, I saw the city of Altondale cancel layers. What's happened?
I mean, you know, we would, we would still be planning to do it.
I agree.
Which is, you know, so unless the council told us otherwise and, you know, I would imagine that whoever.
How would we do it, realizing the social distancing as opposed to in the past?
I think if you take the negative and turn it into a positive, I mean, with kids, you now get to wear gloves, all the candy's wrapped, you know, I don't want to say throw it out, but, you know, they've got some new things now on YouTube where they're creating little buckets where they're putting like PVC pipes in, you know, it's filling up your candy bowl from there. We got the full park, but I think that's just a matter of being creative and use the atmosphere to be entertaining, because it's outside, it's huge.
Now you're creating a whole new event. You need a planner.
Well, see, so we would imagine that bouncy houses are out.
Correct.
Yeah. But we could have a slide, an inflatable slide and just have somebody regulating how frequently you go up and go down and, you know, we could every.
Kids.
Always giving the way you do by using the picker and the pick and dropping the baskets, no.
Yeah, we could use pickers and, you know, or free bag thing, you know, like, you know, there are variations to it, but, so what I hear you saying is, you don't agree about the slide, so maybe we have no activity.
I don't know, about the little general or whatever, we usually had that. I mean, that was.
The train, did we have the train last year?
And we have the train planned for Day of the Dead, right? Oh, yeah, we always have the train. And.
And that's one of the reasons that.
We would have to get to wear every other seat, unless you're a family unit.
Yeah.
Like, so you would almost like.
What was the participation level last year?
Oh, God.
What was the participation level last year?
Well, remember it rained. It rained last year and he had to reschedule it to the same day as Day of the Dead. But both, both events were well-attended. I mean, Saint Halloween is a slam dunk because you got free candy for kids. Now, of course, we created it thinking it was going to give kids an alternative to trick-or-treating, but they go from here right into the neighborhoods, which, you know, we have, we have certain residents that have pictures of the same kids that have grown up at their door, trick-or-treat Tamra. So, you know, I just think that, you know.
We should dress up and go to Tamra's house, though.
But, but I will say, you know, Freedom Fest, we had no idea how many were going to show up. And, I mean, you know, given that we usually have a couple of thousand out there, clearly we had very little participation by comparison. So it's just one of those things that we just have to decide, we're gonna do it, and we're just gonna have to see how many people are going. And if we have a bunch of candy left over, maybe we, you know, do something at Christmas in the park that, you know, dispenses candy. Um, because the, the, we do collect candy from the community, uh, and businesses donate candy, like, um, but we do have an expense to it. Uh, but it's usually the games and stuff that we run. But if we're not doing that, then maybe it just becomes solely trick-or-treating, or. I was gonna say, you could do like a drive-through trick-or-treating with the train, but then that line would be backed down from now till the end of time. Because the train is wildly popular, no matter how many times we have it, it's like a bouncy house, I'm mystified.
Can I make an actual recommendation? What has been working very well in the past, um, for, like churches, they usually do a trunk or treat.
Right.
We could have maybe some police cars or, uh, some of the city cars with the trunk open, and that way, there's social distancing, and they're going from one place to another. And it cuts down on a long line, because they're kind of going around, the lights could be going, and they're, they come in quickly and then leave very quickly.
So they're in the parking lot or in the.
In the parking lot, correct.
So it becomes truly a trick-or-treating, or trunk-or-treating situation, just like some of the churches mentioned here. Where literally the only activity you have is giving away candy.
Yeah, and we can use that PVC pipe chute that's in there.
Or different, like the picker, maybe it's the style, maybe every station has a different way to get it, right?
And YouTube gives you some really creative ideas, you know, it just says something different, but.
Yeah, I like the thought, and like, if, if we had the fire department on top of the fire engine, shooting stuff down like a little PVC pipe, that would be kind of fun. And it'd give them the height to be up on the, on the, the ladder truck. Well, you can't give that in a park with too many tricks. But anyway, yeah, we could make it all different, and this, and the sort of the event becomes how you're dispensing the candy. The picker, the PVC pipe, looking up some other ideas, and so the experience is about how I just got my candy from that, that place. Uh, and then we just eliminate, and we'll play music, um, and then we eliminate all other activities.
So it's a green light in the event, we just need to move forward.
Yeah.
All right, excellent.
What about, like, photos, photo ops? Was that successful before? Because I, we changed that, right, with, um, how we did the Santa pictures and stuff.
Well, yeah, I don't think we had photo ops at Safe Halloween, did we?
No, I'm just thinking.
Well, and, and he, you know, reminds us of something. So when Chief Callaway leaves, he was our resident sound guy. He always brought all of his equipment for Christmas in the park and Safe Halloween, so our DJ is no longer. So we're gonna have to come up with a solution for that.
Hire, hire Callaway.
That would be funny.
Yeah, that would be funny, actually. Maybe you'd like to make a guest appearance.
On the weekends, he'll come down.
Safe the house, Safe Halloween.
I'd charge you a lot.
I'll tell him you said so.
All right. Uh, Day of the Dead, uh, we know it's out there, met with those folks again today. Um, they, they seem to be moving, and they're right, right, and so, yeah, give that boost to, to make that work. And also trying to pick his mind a little bit as to, um, from his organizational standpoint, in other words, who are, who is his client as a, um, a chamber of commerce? You know, are the contractors and different people, what's represented here in Morrow? And you start to look at it and say, there's obviously, you know, not very many Hispanic dentists, there aren't very many Hispanic insurance companies.
What was the first one you said?
Dentists.
Dentists.
Of almost any type, right? Um, you know, so I found that the, you know, those are obvious sections, and they're, they're filling them in, and it certainly happens. So those are some gaps in terms of what we have or don't have, uh, that might be able to provide some opportunity, I thought that was nice. And, and he also mentioned, you know, tech, which was a little surprising. And you go, okay, um, but we don't have, you know, really almost any of that right here. So the construction, obvious, right, but the, you know, not so much restaurant, obviously.
Well, if you think, if we think about storefronts, do we, do we know of any, um, Latin American, Latino American-owned businesses? Do you, do you, I mean, like, in Morrow?
Oh, in Morrow, um, well, the restaurants is the first thing that comes to my mind.
Yeah.
Most, most of them are hair salons or something, they're not retail, I can't think of any.
Well, I mean, I would consider hair salon, it's, it, I mean, it's a service, it's a retail.
He said usually they'll, they'll, they'll come into like a small shopping center, and they, they pretty much kind of grab control of that. And we've got a number of vacant, you know, so it's just a matter of saying, um, once we start something, maybe we could pull it on.
I also was talking to someone tonight who said that the plaza at, um, where Dairy Queen is, is for sale for one point eight million?
Let's, um, let's talk to them. And we wanna talk about, you know, moving traffic on Lee Street, you know, when a property is for sale, there's, there's a time period to see if you can, you know, make a deal. The idea of buying a shopping center, the idea is to, you know, drive your road right through the middle of it, and then you can sell to a shopping center. And that, that's not a, that's not a bad price, to be honest, if, if that number's correct, it's less than they paid for.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually surprised at that. Now, I will tell you, we know that there's room for it to be done, but, you know, to your point, that, that's not gonna matter as much. I mean, both sides would still have to be, they still need to be improved, because that's one of the complaints we get from the, on the right side, the tenants on the right side, in Deegan specifically.
But if they work with us on that, and you divide it into two, the value is one of them separate by themselves.
Maybe, may go up, yeah.
Pretty cool. Uh, well, especially since you now have a corner property, right, you're going right to the middle, that's why it creates, um, that's worth a discussion, um, because they, they may change their mind by sale if, if they can get some, some cooperation. And then I think we talked about the guy from Bloomberg, but he's not in town a lot, correct?
Oh, yes, Bloom.
Bloom, okay.
I was like, Bloomberg.
The billionaire from New York, who's trying to go to New York.
Yeah. Do we, Jasmine, has he given, you know, the owner of Bloom, he hasn't chimed back in about we don't be in town?
Bloom, that'll be stuff we can team up and make some more. Cool, all right.
No, of course, the Day of the Dead is on Monday.
So.
Two days ahead.
November the first?
Sunday, Sunday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause, cause Halloween's on Saturday, right?
Yeah, and, and just, you know, just.
Now, City Christmas, you know, I got a list of this Old Town Morrow, obviously, Old Town Morrow wouldn't be able to come up that fast. It's nice to use it for Halloween, but you're not gonna be able to do much else with it in that, that period, I don't think. But this is where you start to ask the additional questions. Um, we've, we've done that event out there before. We, we got the choir Christmas tree that is broken, is that on?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't think that is even usable anymore. We had the, the person that built it came out and was like, yeah, I can't be using this anymore.
But it's made out of steel? Can't the guy who's using steel blow it back together?
Sure, well, you know, I mean, I don't know that we talked, it, we need to know, is, is it cost prohibitive to fix it or just get a new one built? I mean, it was kind of like the deterioration was, was deep and wide, um, but we should, I should ask again before I make it up to the board. Uh, you talk, living Christmas tree.
That's correct. And what, what did, what did, what does a new one cost? Again, it was all steel benches and leeches, and, you know, we were inviting, you know, different choirs to come, and, you know, their night could be a certain thing, um, and, you know.
But I'll be honest with you, Mayor, you know, this Christmas, with the pandemic, yeah, nobody's gonna be singing in a choir.
Or when you start to look at, you know, again, having been for the vast majority of the churches in this, you know, city at this point, um, some of those people remember that. You know, and it was like, how do we all get together as a community and, and be able to make this work? And, uh, this is what we used to do, but we don't do it anymore, and you're like.
Well, and, and, you know, just so we're, we're clear, and, you know, we do reach out to the churches to participate, and, you know, typically you'll have a, a higher level of interest, and then as the, it gets closer, because a lot of our congregations, the established ones, have a lot of elderly people, they don't wanna be out and, when it's called. Um, so that's one of the things we run into. We've had a lot of people that plan to be here and they're canceled on the last day.
But we have a lot of churches that do participate.
True.
We have a live activity scene out there, that the choirs come and sing.
And then, and they have also participated in this, this Safe Halloween, and we think the Trump retreat, all right, and so. But, yeah, I mean, you know, heightening of participation with the churches is a, that's a, that's an easy win.
Well, when we did the activity scene out in Old Town Morrow, we had five thousand people out there. That's, can't be helped with City Hall, the reason why City Hall, in terms of just flipping lights.
Yeah, but that, if you remember, well, I think we had it out there two years, because the first, the first year was the, the Mac Daddy year, when all, like, the JCPenney's and the, and the, the Macy's, every, all the charrettes that we had set up, and we had the really cool, um, snow. But then the second year, the snow wasn't, didn't work as well, because the temperatures were warmer, right? And it kept slushing up with the mud out there, so, anyway, I mean, all stuff that we can definitely, you know, talk about.
That becomes more of a commercialized event, right? That's also something that we can work on toward getting somebody to participate in that. Whether they do, you know, ice skating, whatever, a lot of them.
I'd say easily, we had twenty-five hundred people in, in, out here this last year, you know, because we had the parish school, and.
Like, it was, was, as they say, the bomb.
Yeah, it was. We had a lot of people, we had to use a lot of auxiliary parking. We had that volunteer set up, like, at the church parking lots, just to watch the cars. We had to hire a police officer from Lake City to, to watch one of the, because we just had so many people involved, so. But it was a, it was a good event last year. I mean, I, I, I think it's a good event every year, but last year, we put a little effort into making sure it was, it had a wow factor. And, uh, and I think it paid off.
And this year with COVID, we're gonna do what?
Well, it's a COVID Christmas. Please don't be able to say that on the billboard, it's a COVID Christmas.
La 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 la.
So it's kind of, it's just a thought, right? I mean, because this stuff is right around the corner, almost back-to-back to back, right? And then, Juneteenth, you know, we talked about that, Freedom Field and pending, again, similar thought process, generic ideas, but we gotta pull a concept together, you know? What are we gonna do about it? Phil Festival, you know, same thing, idea, don't have anything there. Um, and again, we did, we're already at age, everything got started, you know?
Well, a, a lot of the events, you know, they happen sort of in, on automatic pilot, as, as one might like to say. Because it's, it's, you know, the things are in place, but, to your point, you can't automatic pilot when you're redesigning during a pandemic. So it's not just a matter of just, okay, the same thing we have, we're calling them again, or a different version, or something that wasn't as popular, or hey, remember the long run for this? So, yeah, it'll, we'll have to do, Christmas would be interesting.
Very much.
Because we can't do choirs, we just established that, we're not gonna do bouncy houses.
Going on, uh, City Billboard, you know, in terms of that, has that moved at all?
Yes, and did you see the picture in your packet?
And, yeah, we also.
I wanna know what you all think about something along those lines.
Which one?
The chicken?
Yeah, love the, the sign.
Well, it's, it's the sign, it's the fact that there's a sign attached to the pole.
Did you see the west gate down below it, and how that was?
So if we did like the Morrow Center logo, and it was lit, attached to a pole like that, then it's almost like that whole installation becomes a different conversation. You, you're building the pole, considering the weight of that coin, I'll call it, but you're not framing the sign in it, it's just attaching to the pole.
Well, and this one, it didn't look like the pole's straight, right, it's got an angle to it.
I think it's just the photographs, the, I was trying to get the photographs so you could see them both.
So you think it is straight? I mean, doesn't matter, you know? But, but I think that looks definitely more affordable, right?
So if, if everybody's cool with that kind of thing, I'd like to move forward getting cost estimates on some concept that's similar to that. Using the Morrow Center logo, right? Saying Morrow Center and having those illumination features.
What is the concept in the book? I see that.
The, the, the billboard is, is done by the billboard company, that does digital marketing.
Okay.
This is the portion that, that basically attaches to that pole, and that keeps our cost down to something limited to just what that cost is. In other words, they still do the entire pole, they set up the digital, but what we're, we're buying into is, you know, the, just the addition versus some grandiose changing a lot of different.
So we're generally, it's a small section, time, volume.
Yeah, this is, this is all just structural. On the billboard, that's a combination of us basically creating a, allowing the permitting on the billboard, getting some time on the billboard, and maybe some additional cash as well.
And, well, yeah, and that's the concept of the idea.
Then, uh, we wanted to add some type of marketing for the Morrow Center, and.
On the permanent structure.
Yes, yes, of some sort, and it's a good idea, you know, that one looks pretty good. And if you use LED, that number shouldn't cost us a fortune in, you know, what the power will be like, oh, yeah.
Yeah, and, and so it'll, you know, and, and obviously, it won't be on during the day, so, um, I just think.
But, I think you can see, I mean, you know.
Plus it won't take, it shouldn't take too many bulbs, right, and maybe one or two on the backside that's illuminating out versus like a string of lights, so.
Well, and, and when they run the concept, remember everything's related to weight, right, and then you're balancing it off of there, so, uh, whatever. Because you're dealing with the guy who does the design of the whole sign.
Yeah, like, we, I mean, engineers would be telling us that kind of stuff, you know.
So readability, you know, so we don't have a little sign that we said a lot of really good ideas, but you can't see.
Like a shrine.
And then remember, we, uh, you know, we don't know what the tree thing's gonna happen out there, right? So, again, something you can't see, you know, they're gonna have to push that billboard up high enough to be able to see it, but, you know, I hate for our nice little sign to look good for the three months we all have to leave.
Well, and, and, so, you know, just remember too, that the billboard, the permitting issue and what they're able to clear for the billboard, we're gonna go ahead and put the billboard up, but they can't do that clearing for five years from when the permit is issued, right? So to your point.
That's a secondary issue, that's another way to be able to say, if we can't get everything we want on a tree clearing, we know in a certain time period, we're gonna get it anyway.
But I guess my point is, to your point, is that's why we need to make sure the placement of that coin, or that cabinet that has the Morrow Center, is situated in such a way that it's visible, big enough and high enough.
Excellent, excellent. Have a, have a.
What, what's, what's happening with the, the, the welcome ceremony as far as?
Cleaning, you know?
Outside.
That's.
The, the trees, are we leaving trees for what? Those dirty pecan trees.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's like.
I heard you love trees, there's, there's one really big tree that I heard.
In front of the sign.
Certain trees.
She's in love with this tree, the oak tree over on Ralph's, I heard.
No, cer- certain trees.
I know the pecan tree, that is in front of the sign.
There are two pecan trees, both of them are pecan.
I know, but the one closest to the sign is, um, you know, we need to take it down. Uh, that pains me to say.
No, be, be, because the squirrels bury the pecans, and you get baby pecans everywhere, the trees, and then you gotta pull them up. So let's not have nut trees.
See, now I thought you were gonna be a little more conservation than me.
I am, but not when it comes to things that cause you have to work.
So that's two really cool trees in the street.
Harder and not smarter. Work smarter, not harder.
So you want the tree to come down?
Both.
Oh, both? Oh, I see what you're saying, you have both pecan trees.
See, 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 all in, then that's three trees.
And let's, let's put some crape myrrh, and some dogwood, you know.
Two big pecan trees?
Flowers, let's do flowers.
And, uh, if you'll, if you take a visit or drop out, drop up to the, the Welcome Center, it has been totally repainted now. And the, the residential ceiling fans on the backside have been replaced with commercial outdoors.
So now we got a good opportunity to see what.
And so the signage, the, the sign there, what, what's happening?
I think at this point, we should stop until we find a person to be in there, and then we'll see what happens with some of their requests too, because, you know, I, I realize that one tree, even though it's a, it's a magnificent tree, um, it's gonna block all the signs like crazy, but that assumes that everything's gonna be on that pole sign. It might be close to the street, right, and there might be a way to be able to make that work. Uh, with the new digital sign, that might be a little more impressive to all of us, in which case, with the exception of somebody else having to pull up little baby pecan, um, it may not be objective.
Somebody?
It's like little shop owners.
I know, they shop.
I think they sell for like eleven dollars a pound, somebody out there, they're picking them up for free.
Well, trust me, I've checked them out already, uh-uh, not worth the time, they're little tiny things.
But, but, you know, the main objective was to get it cleaned up, and we're managing that.
Well, like, we, we still have some repairs at the parking service, there was a problem with the car charger, uh, that we're, we're addressing, so. What was the problem? The nozzle?
Something was going on, all right, um, that's good.
Do you have that on the use of the charging station?
Well, it's not being used right now, because, well, I guess you said it, it actually is being used, it's just not generating the speed because of that little piece on the nozzle for the car charger station?
There's like a mechanic, mechanical part inside the, the clip, it's broken. So when you hook it in, it supports your clip it down to the, the car, to hook up the, uh, the george, but now it just does it. So when you attach to the car, it kind of fell down.
Yeah, so, well, I guess what I'm asking is, so is nobody using it under its current condition?
Oh, right, and they, they can use it, yes.
It's just doesn't, it's not optimal?
Yes.
Yeah, so, but maybe, maybe every month, we could, that snapshot that we get from the, the name of the company.
Cause right now, the, right now, the communication board is not. Cause right now the, right now the communication board is not working. So there's like a GPS locator on the, the, the charging point. It communicates, it's sending a signal over to the, um, um, charge point, um, a company, so that way they can run, they can put a report on the charge point, how many it been used, but right now it's just not working.
Right. But I guess what I'm saying is, from this point forward, once it's fixed, let's send a snapshot of the usage.
We got forty grand.
We can run a report.
So is that, is that.
Forty thousand dollars in it, right?
Is that on us to, to, to fix?
A little bit more than that.
So we got eighty thousand dollars in it.
Yeah, there you go.
So are we, are we responsible for fixing that or are they, they're gonna fix it?
No, we're, that part we're gonna have to fix.
Okay, so is that something going forward? We gonna have a problem with? Or is it because of usage or what?
Well, that's what I'm coming with is, if it's this plastic piece that there is a better grade, let's go ahead and look at that. Let's don't fix it with the same flimsy hook if there's a better way to fix it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. Continuing on, um, all right, we've already talked about logos and CDC deals and stuff like that. Business newsletter, citizen's newsletter, some relevancy coming out, saying.
I'm trying, I'm trying, man.
And, and I'm sitting at TV many times, you know, um, the, the danger to load yourself up consistently, right? Is, you know, we're gonna fail on something that's gonna matter, right? And I'm not saying these don't matter. They don't matter like the fail might be, you know, we just can't do it. So, and I know no one can do it as well as you. You've done it for years. And I mean, not all of it, I'm just saying it's time.
And, and again, like tr- truly, it is not a matter of no one can do it as well as me. It's that we have never hired the skill set and now we're going to. I feel like we're ready to.
Somewhere out there, somebody here's got some skill sets along there. Not because you got a three different content.
Well, but you can't, just because of that skill set, you can't give them something new. They're already.
Right, but you become more of an editor rather than creator.
Yeah.
And it's easier to sit there and go, that makes no sense, you know, and edit what somebody wrote, um, than, because then we still have the logistics of getting it out and all the other things that kind of go with it.
And translating it.
And translating, right, so, um, there, there's a time to just, you know, and, and, and all you do is you, you're lining up your team and your concepts. You're saying, all right, this team is ready to play, you know, we're gonna play with the team we got. That's how it goes.
How about Warren, uh, Warren's skill set because he's, he did a good job with, uh, putting in the marketing package. If he can get the thing up nice, so maybe he has the capability to assist with that.
Warren's got good visual abilities.
He does. He has great visual ability, but we want him to focus on the Maro Center. Yeah, it's like. Because then, then the conversation becomes similar to the point you just made to Sylvia, you know, loading up expectations and things that we need, it would transfer to Warren. I, I mean, we really want him to focus on the marketing of the center and booking and, you know.
Sometimes you have the right person in the wrong seat. And you say, this is what you get at. This part I'm not so sure you are, you know? If you keep staying in the part you're not very good at, it won't matter. You won't be here.
So is the conversation to find someone else to do the installation?
Or, or it's, you know, because moving people around, sometimes you, you, they don't want to be moved around. And so that's part of the conversation too.
That's a real conversation, yeah.
You know, we're just, you know, it, it.
Well, you got kind of the idea. Let's see what we do with it. Thank you, man. I can get it, but, you know, it can't be on your shelf. I didn't say it was gonna be easy. It just can't be, um, because we, we need due time. I'll try not to talk for four, so, all right, ventilated management discussion, cleanup around the lane. I think most of that was already done. We had those discussions, anybody either headed here or almost there? Fair?
Ready?
Clean up around the lane. That was where you came from? Did they not say that was all? Right? The Arborist Proposal, that was what he was mentioning earlier, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Tour Center, we already talked about that. Um, but do we have a copy ready for the floor plan? You know, where we can start to show off about the floor plan?
I think what we didn't talk about was the logo and seal.
Oh, well, I think we just disagree on it. And it just says you got a marketing line that's outside of the building. We, we obviously have a city seal that's outside of the building and I gotta feel we're gonna be a little bit above for a while.
Can, can I spend a few minutes talking about something that we've, we've touched on, but I think needs a, a deeper conversation with our last ten minutes? May I?
What's your last?
The, the issue of the, the job descriptions that I talked to you about briefly earlier today. So when we had an HR director, um, you know, a lot of job descriptions were created. But even when we had an HR director, every time, like say if, if we hire you and your job description says one thing and you're here ten years and we give you a raise and we change you and add some job descriptions or job duty, if the mayor and council, I have now come to understand this after talking to our attorney today, if you do not approve the new job description, then you are bound by the original one. Okay? So what we need to do is sort of an audit of our, and this is actually one of the projects that we've got some interns from UGA. It's actually, that wanna work on some public administration stuff. And so this is one of the projects on that list, which is, and it's like currently this semester. Okay, so we need to just go through and make sure our job descriptions match our, our expectations, match our co-ordinances, match our, what we're actually doing. So, um, and that's gonna be, you know, it's gonna take some time. My, my request is, let's go ahead and align the department heads. Because right now, say if I look at the police chief, there, he's got listed, um, an exemption status, but maybe the fire chief doesn't. Everybody but the, the public works director and the finance director don't have a tax exempt or a pay classification, um, designation. And so they should really all look the same, and especially at the top. Obviously the details will look different. But what we're, you know, designating them, whether it's their place on the pay scale or whether they're exempt or non-exempt, you know, all that needs to be honestly taken out because it's not required by law. And then if anything changes and you don't change that job description, then it could, you could trip over accidentally down the road. And so I will, I will be preparing, and I just wanted to talk to you all about it, is that we'll be preparing, I'll be preparing for the next council meeting to discuss and then hopefully approve it, the one after that. Unless you can all come to an agreement and we can vote on it next meeting, which will be just the, the, the department head positions. And then after that, I know we sort of started this effort, but we need to take it, and my, if, if the interns take this as a project, they can do it one fell swoop. But I just don't, because we don't have an HR department and, and I, I wanted to take it department at a time. Because if we don't, I feel like people are gonna miss details. So, um, just letting you know, if y'all have questions, let me know. But, you know, it's just, we, and, and Jeff and I today, we're doing research and we got all these multiple job descriptions and they all are sort of job descriptions for the same position. Some of them have different titles. Some of them have a different pay classification. You can't really determine when they were approved by council. So then, say for example, tonight's discussion about the economic development manager, that, we can't find whether that was ever approved by council. Not to say that the one that says director, we didn't actually, you know, have time because it sort of started unveiling as we were getting to the meeting. But instead, so to take all the confusion and question out, I would like to start with the department heads and then move forward department by department. And, and many of them probably won't change at all. But we need to make sure that our job descriptions align with all the other things, including the code, which, uh, outlines five departments that are the administration, police, fire, public works, planning and economic development. And administration in this regard is core. So we just need to shore it up a little bit. Because when we have conversations about anything personnel related, we need to be confident that our job descriptions are updated. And so we get this point where you're saying you're gonna approve them or you have a conversation, we changed things, whatever. From some certain point of approval, from that point forward, these are the job descriptions.
So your recommendation is basically pull them forward by department?
By the first department heads, then by individual department. Unless the interns accept this as the project, I gave them four options, four options, then we can have them all do it at one time.
Agreed? Anybody got any issues with that? I'm picking up on that, just one second. Why don't I get a comfort feeling with the fire marshal's flag?
Well, I mean, I just, I, I think we were surprised to, to find out that, that really nobody was interested. But some of it was because they didn't wanna be here Monday through Friday. Some of it was because, like we said, it wasn't enough of an increase to warrant giving up their, their schedule, you know, two days off, one day off. Some people are made for shit work.
Yeah, but didn't that used to be like, like a holy grail job? You, you really wanted to have it? You had a chief, you had a fire marshal, then you had captains after that.
Yeah, but who, you remember the guy that was here for a really long time? Older gentleman had a mustache?
Yeah, Smith.
Donnie Harry?
Who?
Donnie Harry?
No, no, no. A doll. You, yeah. You may have known him and you may have known him, but we're the, gonna be the only three that were here when he was here. But in a long time. And so it, I would say it is not as coveted unless you have people who are ready to move into that and into that position, maybe toward the end of their career or maybe, but we have a lot of young firefighters. And I, I just don't think they're, they're just not interested, you know? Because it's, it's more, you know, regulated in terms of their schedule.
So, so what's the starting salary for five?
Well, it, it was, I think when Patrick Kelly left, it was fifty-five. But, you know, the range starts lower and goes higher.
Yeah? You certainly understand why. That's terrible. Um, it was Lindsey something. Isn't it Lindsey? Wasn't it Lindsey's name?
Now, you may be taking it back even before me, but that's not the guy that went to Lake City.
Oh, that's him, he was here, she was.
Yeah, we have, we have, but anyway, floor plan for the tour center would be nice, you know, somebody's got that, so we can certainly make it work. We have already had the prior utility project, we have that. Um, so on the Old Town Mar property, we pretty much failed on the insurance claim based on where. Now that we've kind of picked that ball up a little bit, have we worked with the insurance company to make sure that the buildings that we have that have been sitting there vacant for longer than six months, remember? Welcome Center, I, the Reynolds Road property, I, that we, that we got a ladder, we're just hanging ourselves out.
With the, the language is that if it's vacant for sixty days.
Which is a very short period of time.
And but, so then the question was, well, wait a minute, during the pandemic, you know, I mean, so it's like we pay our utility bills, we clean it, we do the landscaping, that's not vacated at the welcome center. The Mon- the Reynolds Road property, because there is a church that, that rents the church and because we have the dog park and it's a trailhead and, you know, and now of course the garden club is gonna move over there, that would never be considered vacant. Um, the Freedom Fest Field is a public park, you know, so it was, it.
I'm worried about that, I'm just worried about.
Well, I'm just telling you, our facilities, the, the, the threshold was about being vacant.
And, and that loss is related to just vandalism?
Well, no, it's that, that it was vacant for more than sixty days, so no matter what happened out there, they weren't covered.
So, so if the building started on fire, we wouldn't have make a burger ground.
Maybe not.
Somebody breaks a window out, I can deal with that. I can break two hundred seven windows out. I'm not happy about that. But if a building burns the ground, I'm gonna say they're not covered.
And that may be a different, uh, different, but I'll, that's a good question. I'll definitely ask.
That would make it say vandalism. I mean, I mean, if someone set on fire.
Yes, it may have a different liability threshold.
But I'd like to know we have coverage, the thing we have coverage, because that would be bad.
Well, like I say, we, we, this is the part that our attorney worked on, but I don't, I, I would have to look at the specific, um, limitation for fire. Right? That may be something different.
And then if we got a ladder, but we, we absorbed a higher deductible, right? That's, that's basically everything's related to the insurance is deductibles, right? So if you keep that low deductible and you say anything above a thousand dollars, you, you just pay through the nose and it's even greater. But, but let's say we save fifty thousand dollars, you know, so we take the lower hit, but, but at least they, you know, didn't destroy the entire piece, right? It's a good question. All right, so.
Still a bit, a bit high on the, uh, trial, um, what was the case again, um, Old Town Mar? What were the reasons?
Well, they, they basically said because the buildings were vacant and it's a clause in, in the particular insurance policy we have, that if it's vacant longer than sixty days, that they're not covering any of it. That's not the strongest insurance coverage you can have, right?
And, I mean, again, to your point, we could pay more of a premium and get, get a different level of coverage, but it is not, it's, it's not typical as, through conversations, is that, that a government owns a facility that stays empty? I mean, that's.
We've got several.
Yeah, and so.
And, and an example would be, so is the conference center just a conference center or is the dark space considered that?
Well, because the utility box for the Maro Center is inside the exhibit hall and, you know, that, so that connects it. It's not technically vacant.
So, so we got at least one house working on it?
And there, and I think there's also some thresholds about residential property versus commercial property and, and stuff like that.
Right now, I hear you're risking, we run a Florida flag.
But that, we, I mean, we had a full out conversation about that. That is not vacant because of all the uses on the property. Because it's the property, not the building.
Okay, and then the welcome center would be the next one.
And we, we pay utilities, we clean it. Now we're renting it out, so it's just not vacant.
And the other one, we know we got a risk too, but it is what it is. Um, and then obviously we've got some idea of what's all happening out there at L T M. You know, there's a possibility, you know, a, a rebranding strategy. You gotta know you love that, right? But, you know. We, we probably have killed that name off.
Yeah, I think at this point, Old Town Anything is dead.
What was it, uh?
And rebranding is, is not gonna hurt us, so.
What was the new name, title, new name?
Well, in reference, just in, in terms of the sanitation schedule, what we call the outdoor town center.
Outdoor town center.
But that, that's not the, ultimately the rebranding of it. I'm sure it's just, that's the placeholder we left instead of Old Town Mar. Outdoor town center.
Just kick around some ideas, you know, run them up the flight call. Gotta stay Mar or something, right? That'd be nice. It's, it's Mar's Town Center.
I'll see what Warren thinks.
So. So, and then we, we know it's a tour. Yeah, and then you're going, all right. Now we gotta figure out what it's gonna take to at least get it back to some basic sense. Uh, and you gotta have windows, just back, you know, doors. I gotta go back. Um, there isn't any reason for the use of that property, but it is what it is, right? And the original splotch from two thousand eight, yeah, one of those projects was over there. I think we had a budget in there of two point one billion and I think we're losing one point eight, something like that. So I know, I know Warren's, or not Warren, but the building's gonna eventually come up with a number, right? Is that fair? We have a fountain that nobody's looked at in a long time, has nothing to do with the building and may or may not be operational, correct? And now you've got an area that you can lease it out, right? You lease out basically the green space, you secure what you have and we come up with, who needs my ideas of what it's gonna call it, right? And how to do it, cost effective, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, any issues with that? You know, we don't have answers yet. We're just gonna get better answers. Reynolds Road, um, same thing. Um, and I guess today, maybe we could add it in there too, is you've got the conference center, I, I really have the dark space that you know, right? So, Reynolds was started out. So we know that, you know, there's a possibility for, you know, a little rec center or a senior center or both, you know, but, but that's gonna take a little time, right? It, it doesn't get done right away. Um, this is where it becomes really important to kind of know what the two thousand fourteen splotch was like. That we had the two million dollars that were still left from the software that we're just not gonna use because we're on the communication center. So is that two million relevant? Are we a million dollars into that?
And remind me, Angela, the, the software for finance, that was gonna come out of the.
I think that's just floss, but I think that was a six million.
Floss, huh?
Yes, come out of floss.
But that's what I was, I mean, that would be that communications thing, that. Yeah, that's what I was, I mean, that would be that communications thing, that communication number.
Well, I think it was, it was a separate number in there. You saw the finance software in that splosh number and, um, the other one for communication. It might have some overlap, but it is just in there separately.
Question. What's the communication?
Originally there would have been, um, an upgraded communications department.
The nine oh one center?
Um, the nine oh one center. Um, and that one would, thank you, you're on the nine oh one center.
Anything?
That's true.
So you're saying that, that money is?
So the way the law agrees is because we passed referendum categories, okay? So one of the categories was communication. It was like two point one million dollars. Well, when the need for that money goes away, because we merged our nine oh one center with the county, then we have the opportunity to reallocate that money for that category. But it has to be reallocated to the categories that existed on the referendum.
So let's, let's assume that it exists. In fact, we haven't already spent some of it. And if we allocated, we're just taking two million dollar number, we, we know we're talking high to the duck, but we're pretty close on paper. So if we allocated half of that toward your exhibit center and half of that toward doing something with the senior center.
What's the exhibit center?
The dark space.
Dark space.
Okay, did we just call it something else a minute ago?
No.
We didn't call, listen, events.
I think y'all know what it is, I just haven't come over to the dark side.
We need it, we need it.
I'm working on it.
I hear you, but it's like.
Dark space, unused space, it's been called some several things, but I, I feel like that we've had conversations on the council where we wanna maybe move forward turning it into an exhibit hall. Um, and so we'll, at some point, need to start calling it that.
Right, yes, I.
And it, it goes, it goes just beyond that. There's that little small room that doesn't have any air conditioning over there. And that, that's interesting because it's like the idea was it was supposed to have air conditioning and somehow another we turn it off.
So wasn't that the industrial?
No, no, no. The industrial room is the old tea room, the Macy's tea room.
Well, and, and the tea room, that's a good example is because that was originally gonna be a restaurant.
Is it still called tea room?
We call it tea room. At least we know what it is. As long as we know what we're talking about, if, if we call whatever we want.
Well, I think, I mean, Warren refers to it in the rental space portfolio as the industrial space.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
But it is technically the tea room.
But anyway, that becomes a part of that. Now that one, you know, just from an air conditioning standpoint, that'd be solid that and then use the space as it is. But you don't wanna go so far that if we couldn't find a, a tenant to pick that up as a restaurant, um, you know, that would be, that would be pretty cool. Cause if you're looking at what Cumberland did outside of theirs or.
Yeah, cause I would love, you know, if I was the king of the kingdom, which we know I'm not, but wouldn't it be cool to take all that and put some outdoor seating beyond the windows and.
It's not a musical, Sylvia. Huh? Is that a musical? I think you need to make that a musical.
What? A king of the kingdom? I'm going to. But, uh, because you wouldn't want the, the restaurant entrance to be inside the mall center.
And it's not.
Yeah, right.
There was a right to go.
Well, but there's one to there, but again, I feel like if you've got a restaurant that wanted outdoor seating, that would be really cool.
The only thing we honestly don't have is, you know, if we could magically make it go, what, is there magically any piping in there? Cause it's been that way for years, you know, of what's buried in, you know, seven feet of dirt. Good question. But those are the things that, that, that's planning, right? Mostly not so much great visuals, because let's face it, the buildings, they're assigned to medicine, don't know what it is. But, you know, mechanical, electrical plumbing and really paying attention to, you know, before it's built, making sure that we don't have a power bill that's obscene when we're only using portions of it, right? We have to, to really look at smaller units, not a twenty ton system, but a series of five ton system, you know, or at least in a portion of it, something like that. So, um, but, but that is a way to not only fund it, and remember, these, these dollars can't be used to pay five funds. Right? Like it or not, you can't pay five hundred, right? So, you know, if you want a project that makes sense through community, at the same time, you know, try and move something forward that's already sitting there and it's been sitting there for ten years. So, issues with that. Cause it's gotta be forward, right? And those will be the things that, you know, your economic developed people, right? But that's something they can start on their own planning process with, right? So here's what you have. We gotta contact somebody, who needs my ideas, what you're looking for, and get them, and get them, and.
But, I mean, as long as we understand that the, the planning for a space like that with the, all the pieces you need, I mean, that's gonna be something, we're gonna hire some agency, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
On, on a shoestring budget, right? That's, that's what it'll take, uh, for both of them, right, in terms of that. And I haven't spent tremendous, I mean, I've seen the buildings, but, you know, we're really gonna think of use as to how some of that goes. And we talked earlier about maybe, you know, some of the little arts and crafts space and everything down that one building, if that would work out that way. So, you know, take our time, but, you know, we, we do need to start to move some of that stuff forward. All right, um.
Uh-uh, don't do it, Dr. Dean. Don't do it. Uh-uh.
And don't be looking at me. Your questions go to the night.
We're, we're past your bedtime, so.
We have turned into pumpkins.
All right.
Can you send an email to her?
Yeah, only one last, last question. We'll go with this. Um, Otter, on schedule?
Otter's schedule will come out November the ninth.
We don't have a lot of room for air between November.
No, the Otter, the, the state extended the deadline till March the thirty first. Cause of COVID, yeah.
All right. I think it's, um, I don't know. I don't know. It's gonna be like you'll hit that card. All right, we'll call that a day.
Good night.
I thought you had a question.
Okay.
No, no, no. Don't be sending an email.